Okay, okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So it is 4:41 and I'm calling this meeting to order. And Ms. Anna, would you establish quorum?
Yes ma'am. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez Garza.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum. Councilwoman Jessica Ortega is not gonna be able to attend today. And Councilwoman Marissa Gerlach is out on a training today for the city.
Okay, thank you. The next item is invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we gather in gratitude for the men and women who have served our nation with courage, honor, and sacrifice. We thank you for their steadfast commitment to defending our freedoms and protecting our way of life. We ask your blessings upon all veterans, those who have returned home, and those who made the ultimate sacrifice. We may never take for granted the peace and liberty they secured for us. May our actions always reflect our gratitude and may this community remain a place that honors and supports those who serve. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is a disclosure of conflicts of interest. Ms. Anna, has anything been submitted?
Mayor Pro Tem Plata has one regarding Ciberon, Executive Session Item Number Two.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to presentations, and the first presentation is a proclamation for Municipal Court Week.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and Mr. County. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Mission Municipal Court is a state court and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas the procedures for the Mission Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas, whereas the City of Mission is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas Mission Municipal Judges are not policymakers for the City of Mission but are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the City Council, city officials, and employees. Whereas the City Council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Mission Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas proclaim the week of November 3rd through 7th, 2025, as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Mission proclaimed on this day, the 28th of October, 2025.
Mayor, I want to approve the proclamation as presented to us.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you. With me today, I have Janie Gomez, Nora Gonzalez, Carla Paez, Kayla Trevino, Danielle Ramirez, and Carlos Ortega on behalf of the Mission Municipal Court. Thank you all.
Put this back here.
I'm gonna give it to you. A two, a two, and I'm like, uh. Right here. Thank you. I'm having to give it to you right now because the signature's missing. So once it's signed, then I'll get it back to you. Yes, thank you, thank you. The next item is a proclamation for Veterans Day. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chief Doris, Mission Police Department, and here we have some of our officers who are military veterans, some that couldn't attend. The Veterans Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas we are pleased and honored that the City of Mission, City Council, will pay tribute to the dedicated veterans who have served this great nation with such distinction, both in peacetime and in war. And whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in the defense of freedom, which we all continue to enjoy. And whereas, in honor of those dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of the people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. And whereas, on this patriotic occasion, let us all commit ourselves to the great need of fostering a spirit of rededication to the ideals that have served as the foundation of this country. One nation under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all. Now, therefore, we, the City Council and the City of Mission, invite all veterans to participate in our Veterans Day Freedom Parade on Saturday, November the 8th, 2025, and Veterans Day Thank You BBQ on Tuesday, November the 11th, 2025, at the Mission Event Center from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Proclaim this on the 28th of October, 2025.
Mayor, I want to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as presented and read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero. So we're gonna take this opportunity to have a little photo op, so we're gonna go outside, right at the steps, and take a picture with you guys. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, good, thank you. Do we need to wait for Ruben, or no? Okay. Okay, next item is our report from the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Brenda?
Employee of the Month? Employee of the Month? Employee of the Month?
I'm sorry. Well, that's right, Brenda's already here. We'll do Employee of the Month.
I'm fast and quick.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
I'm ahead of myself.
No worries.
Brenda, I think you're...
Yes ma'am.
Because you'll see it on that little, on that, there you go.
Okay, perfect. Okay, wonderful. Okay, hi, good evening, Mayor and Council and City Managers, JP and Andy. So I'm happy to report our monthly report for the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Our mission is we advocate for tourism and support local businesses through promotion, education, and networking opportunities. And we do have a lot of wonderful activities happening, and this is our wrap-up report for the month of October. So we did celebrate big milestones recently. We had a 25-year anniversary milestone for PostNet, which they've been helping our small businesses for the last 25 years, and we're really grateful for them. They're also expanding their services, so we do invite members of the community to come and congratulate them and thank them for doing business in Mission. Also, Taqueria Oviedo, they celebrated their 22nd anniversary milestone, so we're really excited and happy for the family. This has really changed their lives and the entire family. They're really grateful, and they want to ensure that they recognize every year that they do, that they are successful at business. So keep in mind that that's something that they'll be doing with us, and they help celebrate with the community. We also celebrated 79 years of business leadership, of business success. So we held our annual membership meeting banquet where we recognized our Business Leader of the Year, our Business of the Year, the Nonprofit of the Year, the Ambassador of the Year, and also two of our Board of Directors have celebrated and have dedicated their volunteer service six years on the board, and that was Veronica Di Vettos and Lance Ames. So we are really grateful for their service, their selfless service, and ongoing support for the community. At the annual membership meeting, we also delivered the annual report to our members, which will be mailed out to them in the next few weeks. We welcome seven new members to the chamber. Business is good. To date, we've actually have a record-breaking number of members that have joined the chamber this year, which is up north of 75, so congratulations to our team. An upcoming, just a couple of highlights, I did print a version for Mayor and Council to take with you. We do have a lot of upcoming events and activities, but some of the highlights are, we do have a lunch and learn for our members. The topic is marketing with Radio United. We do have two ribbon cuttings, one for Clinica Sagrada Corazon, and the other is for Salona Gabe, and a 90th anniversary milestone for one of our tourism assets, the Upper Valley Art League. So be sure to join us. You can also follow our live calendar online, missionchamber.com. And as we wrap up, we do have two signature upcoming events that we are preparing for, so we will begin taking appointments for the community when they are ready to come and join us for the Community Health and Wellness Fair, and also our Citrus Sip Off. We're gonna begin selling tickets for that event as well. And as we wrap up the year and we start a new one, we will be sending a satisfactory member survey to all of our members, and they can give us their feedback, and I hope to share the findings with you all soon. That wraps up my report, Mayor.
Next item is our Employee of the Month, and I'm sorry, I went on a order. Ms. Mungia?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we are proud to present to you our Employee of the Month for September, which is Ms. Nicolet Ramirez. She is an accountant in our Finance Department. She was nominated by Ms. Katia Alanis. I'd like to ask them and Ms. Zesa, our Assistant Finance Director, to join me up here in the front. The team is here as well, I don't know if they wanna come up here as well. Okay. Our Media Department has created a video to showcase the nomination, so we'll be showing that.
My name's Nicolet Ramirez. I'm an accountant here at the City of Mission, and I've been here for almost a year in December. I feel really grateful to be recognized for my work ethic, and I'm honestly really appreciative of everybody that I work with. I feel like everybody works together in a team, and it's great to know that they see me as someone that can be the type of Employee of the Month here in our department. I regularly work with my accounts receivable, so I go to different departments, collect cash reports, make sure, you know, our bank matches up with our books. I feel proud to be representing Mission, it's a big honor, and I'm thankful that I was selected, and I can't say how happy I am, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity. I wanna thank my department, my coworkers. I especially wanna thank my Assistant Director, Isasa, and my Finance Director, Mr. Oman. I wouldn't be where I am if it weren't for them. I started off with no experience, everything I knew was from school, so to apply it here and to see that my hard work is paying off is a really good thing. I'm very proud to be recognized as City of Mission's Employee of the Month.
Would you like to say something?
I wanna thank everybody for the opportunity. I wanna thank my Finance Director and my Assistant Director, and also Katia for nominating me. I wouldn't have gotten it if she didn't recognize my efforts, but I'm really appreciative of the opportunity, and I'm happy to see that everybody's hard work is being showcased so that everybody can see how effective we are here at the City of Mission.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you. Okay. I'll go down and take a second. Okay, the next item is departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Are there any questions or comments on that, or any motion?
Mayor, I want to approve the reports as presented to us.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero. Next item is citizens' participation. Has anyone signed up, Ms. Anna?
No ma'am.
Nope, okay. And we will go on to announcements. Our City Managers, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of comments here on events. As Halloween is around the corner, we have a couple of events. Halloween Spectacular Festival on Friday, October 31st, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Mission Event Center. Also, we're gonna have our Veterans Day Parade, November 8th, at 10:00 a.m. The route is gonna be on Business 83 from Conway to Bryan Road. Also, they're gonna have the Veterans Day Appreciation BBQ, November 11th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Mission Event Center. That's all I have.
Andy, anything?
That's about it.
That's it? Okay. No comments? Ruben?
No comments.
Okay. I don't have any comments or announcements either, so we'll go on to public hearing. And my understanding is Item 7 has been withdrawn, is that correct?
The resolving case has been withdrawn.
Okay. So Item 7 has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we'll move on to Item Number 8.
This is a conditional use permit for the packaging of water and ice for Royal Water. This is in the commercial plaza on 4th Street, just east of Bryan Road, it's on Suite M. Sony's commercial, that's the area of the commercial plaza, the exterior of the suite. And so those are the photos of the interior of the suite. Unfortunately, this has been in operation for three months, he didn't get the proper permits, but he's trying to get them now. I met with the fire marshal at the site, he had no objections to this business, he just needs some remodeling. He needs a fire exit, a proper fire exit, as long as he does a proper remodeling, the fire department has no objections to this business in this suite. So staff recommends a permit for one year with the conditions listed, no opposition from the neighborhood, planning and Sony Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, there being none, are there any questions for staff?
I want to approve the request as presented with those conditions.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested, subject to the conditions as listed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero. Next item?
The next item is a renewal...
Oh, and I'm sorry, that was ordinance number 5730. Yes.
The next one is a renewal of a conditional use permit for a drive-through for the Taqueria Oviedo that was mentioned earlier during the chamber report. Really nice Mexican restaurant. We haven't had any issues with the drive-through, so we're recommending, we're recommending life of the use with the understanding that the CUP can be revoked for any problems.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or opposition? There being no comments, are there any comments from staff?
I want to approve the recommendation of planning and Sony for a life of use.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the life of use conditional use permit for Taqueria Ovidio at 608 West Griffin Parkway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero, and that's 5731. And congratulations on your years of service to the City of Mission. If y'all have not been to Taqueria Ovidio, you should, because the food is amazing, so. Okay, all right. Next item is...
Yes, a reconsideration of the conditional use permit for the... For example, for... Since we don't have a complete council, we're asking that the public hearing be held during your November meeting.
Yes.
So I don't know if the item needs to be tabled.
Yes, I would prefer to have the item tabled so that we can have the full public hearing at the next...
Yes, and we will send notices, a new round of notices to the surrounding property owners.
Yes, please.
And we will have the public hearing for your November meeting.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to have a motion to table the item?
I want to table the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table Item Number 10. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero to table. Thank you. Next item?
It's a conditional use permit for the sale and on-site consumption of alcoholic beverages at El Itacate Restaurant, a very nice Mexican restaurant on Cherry Road. We haven't had, we asked for police report, there hasn't been one incident in this place. From the discussion in the workshop, it was agreed that it was gonna be a two-year. From the workshop discussion, it was agreed that it was gonna be a two-year instead of life of the use. Yes.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? There being no comments?
Mayor, I want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit renewal for a period of two years at 301 North Cherry Road. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero, and that's ordinance number 5732.
The next item is a renewal of a conditional use permit for a home occupation, which is a daycare in a property zone, our one. This is at Leonajo Street, just west of Perkins. It's a daycare in a former small apartment complex, and we haven't had any issues with the surrounding property owners, so staff is recommending a life of the use. Ah, no, we're recommending a four-year.
Four-year?
Four-year permit, yes.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? I don't see anyone. So are there any comments, questions?
Mayor, I want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit renewal for a period of four years at the address of 311 West Leonajo Street. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-seven thirty-three. Next item is consent agenda, and those are items number thirteen through twenty-seven.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda item for item number thirty, thirty, twenty-seven.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, items number thirteen through twenty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero. And Ms. Anna, can you read the numbers for the ordinances and the resolution numbers?
Yes, ma'am. Item number fifteen would be Resolution 2006, Denying the Statement of Intent filed by Texas Gas Service. Item number twenty, Resolution 2007, Authorizing Mission Police Department to Submit an Agreement for Temporary Closure for the Veterans Day Parade. Item twenty-three, Approval of Resolution 2008, Declaring 514 Chairs as Surplus from the Mission Event Center. And item twenty-four, Approval of Ordinance 5734, Amending Ordinance 5714, Adopting Three Additional Personnel for Firefighter.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to approvals and authorizations, and the first item is Mr. Sedvantis.
Do you remember we gave a presentation about the Native Plants Committee?
Yes.
So we have seven people, seven people that are interested in serving, that are kind of like experts. So these are the slides that I showed before. We're trying to set up a program similar to a Louisville, Texas program, where native plant properties get recognition. So that's the resolution that we're asking you to approve with the seven members that are proposed for the committee. And I think some of them may be here.
Okay, would you like to introduce them?
Yes, so-
We have a listener, Chris Perez, that's Kamu Garcia, the plant, the plant owner.
Come on up, come on up. All right, thank you. So before we take a vote, does anybody want to say anything?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I just, we're very excited about this, and Mackenzie couldn't make it. I don't know if y'all didn't know that, but she's been a real help on this. So that's about it.
Anything else?
She's been our favorite city.
Yeah.
No, yeah, we're excited for this to happen, right? This is one of those things that we've kind of advocated for, for a while, just kind of talked about internally. And so it's exciting for the City of Mission to kind of, you know, get on that and be one of the first cities here in the valley to really do that. So it's very exciting, so, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, all right. All right, is there any more comments or questions?
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2009, Establishing a Native Plants Ad-Hoc Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And thank you so much for serving, because this is very, very important. We need a picture. I don't know what happened to our photographer. You hear it?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a big day in City of Mission. Yes, it is. It really is. Yeah? He's coming. Okay, well, let's go down so you can be ready for the picture.
With one of my baby girls. Yeah, thank you so much for the beauty.
I'll get in here.
We're just, we're just like smiling.
Yeah, Chris, we're smiling.
Let me have these pictures. I'll write it.
I do.
I appreciate it.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Mr. Co-Interim City Manager Andrew Garcia. Thank you so much. Item number twenty-nine, I'll be presenting this item for Mr. Tecla Garcia. Authorization, the mayor to execute advance funding agreement between the City of Mission and the Mission Economic Development Corporation related to the construction of infrastructure improvements for a property owned by MEDC, located at 1407 East Expressway 83, Mission, Texas, related to the construction infrastructure improvements needed for this property, a five-plus acre tract. The improvements consist of water lines, sanitary sewer lines, drainage infrastructure on the property in an amount not to exceed $237,000 to be paid in advance. These improvements are crucial to making the property marketable and enhancing its development potential. The MEDC Board approved the advance funding agreement on October 15th, 2025. Staff and co-interim city manager recommend approval.
Second.
The motion and a second to execute the advance funding agreement between the City of Mission and Mission Economic Development Corporation. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Managers. Public Works is seeking authorization to award the rehab of La Cachia Drainage Project that is being funded through the GLO grant. With this grant, it's a little bit over, around a million dollars. With that grant, we're able to solicit for grant administration and the part of the design as well. And we're also going to be able to fund the construction. So we're able to do, completely fund this project through grant funding. So in accepting and opening eleven bids for the rehab project, staff recommends awarding bid to PNC Oilfield Services, who is the lowest possible responsible bidder, meeting all specifications, with a bid of $479,508.25. Staff and co-interim city managers recommend approval.
Any questions? Discussion? A motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the award for the rehabilitation of La Cachia Drainage Project. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously three zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. Is Hisa Garcia Assistant Finance Director. I'll be presenting for Mr. Roman. Consideration Authorization to Extension of Bank Depository Service Contract with Texas National Bank related to RFP 214410915. The bank depository service agreements with Texas National Bank is set to expire November 26th, 2025. The city is currently evaluating proposals due to the fact that the evaluations are presently being reviewed. They will be presented to council for consideration on the meeting scheduled November 12th, 2025. The city is requesting to extend the bank depository with Texas National Bank for the next three months after expiration. Please note that the city staff has met with the bank officials and they were very cooperative in honoring our request. A letter will be sent to them once city council approves this extension. Staff and co-interim city managers recommend approval.
I'm going to approve, ma'am.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2010. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no unfinished business, I think. Where's number, oops.
Yes, I think it's for thirty-two.
Sorry. I'm way ahead. Sorry. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Mr. Interim City Manager Andrew Garcia. Item number thirty-two, Approval of Resolution Number-
Twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten of the City Council, the City of Mission, Texas Supporting Educational Campaign Regarding Proposition Four, To amend the Texas Constitution to dedicate a portion of revenue derived from the state sales and use taxes to the Texas Water Fund. During the eighty-ninth legislative session, the Texas Legislature passed a proposed constitutional amendment, Proposition Four, That Would Dedicate a Portion Up to $1 Billion, with a B, Dollars of State Sales and Use Tax Revenue Annually For Up To Twenty Years To The Texas Water Fund. Approval of Proposition Four Will Not Create New Taxes Or Fees, But Instead Dedicate Existing Surplus Revenues To Strengthen The Critical Water Drainage Infrastructure Across The State, Following A Model Similar To Transportation Funding Initiatives. Funds Administered By The Texas Water Development Board Would Be Available To Texas Cities, Including The City Of Mission, To Support Long-Term Investment In Water, Wastewater, And Flood Resilience Infrastructure. The City Council Hereby Expresses Strong Support For The Educational Campaign Regarding Proposition Four, Which Is On The Ballot For The November Fourth, 2025 Election. The Council Encourage All Mission Residents To Review The Proposed Constitutional Amendment, Considering Its Benefits To Region And The State And Participate In The Coming Election. Early Voting Locations Are At Bandwood Gym, Parks And Recreation Center, From 7:00 a.m. To 7:00 p.m. Until Friday, October 31st, 2025, And 7:00 a.m. To 7:00 p.m. On Election Day. Staff And Interim City Manager Recommend Approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2010 For The City Of Mission Supporting The Educational Campaign Regarding Proposition Four, To amend The Texas Constitution To Dedicate A Portion Of Revenue Derived From State Sales And State Sales And Use Taxes To The Texas Water Fund. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And this is a very important proposition because it'll expand the capability or the ability for cities to apply for funding for water projects.
Yes, Mayor, as you know, we are working on our expansion, our South Water to implant, and also to build a new water plant on the vicinity of South Conway Inspiration Road. And we will be applying for these funds once we get ready with our environmental assessment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to that. Yeah, okay. Unfinished business now. Anything? Okay, we're going to move on to executive session. Is there a motion to?
I'll show more, ma'am.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second to move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 and .071. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll be right back.